I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Morning Noel.
Good morning.
All meeting to order and I'm assuming you don't have anything else to put on here?
No.
Auditions are corrections, I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second to approve the agenda is printed, any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. We have the minutes from the thirteenth.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the minutes from the thirteenth is printed, any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Dave, any names? We are good, general public concerns.
Get spent to Hawaii.
Yeah.
That's as close as you'll get, right?
It might be as close as I get.
Well, where the jet fuel's going up, it might cost an arm and a leg compared to what it was. Alright, we are a little ahead of time and Todd?
What's your agenda today, huh?
Yes, you can talk a lot.
We had, uh, we went over Sandy and myself went to the meeting the other night and we were talking and I invited him to come and give us a brief overview of all the different things they have going on and where they're at and how the camping's going and all of the things they got going on at the, at the conservation, so it's all yours, Todd.
Um, how much did you share with the group about what happened at the conservation meeting? I guess I'll ask Bruce and Sandy that.
I, I guess I just told them that you had voted to, um, pursue the second study so that we have a comparison. Basically.
Okay, so maybe I'll touch a little bit.
That'd be great.
Did you get a copy of the notes that I took?
I think we did.
Yeah, we passed that around though, so everybody has.
But mine are laying on the floor of the seat in my truck out there.
Yeah, I left mine on the countertop.
So just a backdrop, I guess, we, we had our multi board meeting last week, um, talked a little bit about, uh, pursuing the bar engineering option. It's quite a, a good discussion, but in the end, uh, the board voted to proceed. Um, I don't know if you remember, there was a task one and a task two on the initial, uh, sheet that Brett brought to you guys. We talked quite a bit about that and in talking to Bruce and Sandy, I think the focus or what they really want to find out is more about the structural integrity of the dam. Can we hang gates, what can we do with it, is it gonna handle that? Um, that was more a part of task two. So my suggestion was maybe to combine, I mean, task one initially was more, hey, we're gonna look at it, do you wanna move forward with a deeper study? I think we all do, I think we know the answer to that.
Right.
So without the exit back process, I guess I talked about combining task one and task two. Um, they don't have, I don't have numbers for you today, I have a meeting with them tomorrow afternoon, um, to hammer out more like scope of work and then to talk a little bit more about costs and, and numbers, so I guess.
The other thing we were gonna combine was, we haven't done a dive.
Yep, yeah, good point, um, that is.
No one dives in, but we gotta check the dam first.
As, as an alternate and that is on that sheet. We're obligated to do that every five to seven years, the last one was done in fifteen. I kinda held off thinking, you know, why do I waste that money if we're gonna make some modifications? But at this point, we need to do that irregardless. Um, so, and I also reached out to Brennan since that meeting about doing the roughened dam at the same time, because that one was done in fifteen also, so, uh, yeah, I'll meet tomorrow with Brennan and, uh, BJ about, I guess, all of that. As far as a turnaround, um, I asked BJ if, hey, how long will the state, he was pretty vague, he didn't really commit to anything, so hopefully he has a little more information on that tomorrow. I know, I think I'm speaking for the group in that I'd like to move this along as quickly as we can. Especially like you said, you know, weather's decent now. River's up right now, but I guess it'll go back down.
Right.
What they need to do, barely sensible during the next few months.
Well, I think, and I guess my feelings are, uh, when we have this other study, we can look at them, compare them, see what we're getting with one, see what we're getting with the other, if we have the ability to make, make them work, if they can, you talked about them being able to use part of the first study in, in order to use, I mean, save some of the time and energy that they would be required to do.
But as a part of the task one, I think they allotted like six hours to review that stamp that stuff. Um, and the diagrams, notes, or information that we have already been filed, so, yes. So if that's where I'm at, good news, I think progress, Noel. I missed my, uh, may board meeting, but I think that was kinda giving consensus that this board was.
Yeah.
Just to the M R, is that correct?
Well, and I think that, once again, this board wanted to tell your guys, this board, that no one is trying to step on anybody or sidestep them or whatever, we're just trying to get as much information so that when we get this study and the other one, we can come, all of us get together and say, alright, what do we got? Wha- what can we do and how much money is it? Because every day it seems like things are going up, like you, I heard you talking about getting your welder over, it's gonna cost X amount dollars more than what it.
A year ago.
Yeah.
Twenty percent more than a year ago.
So.
But there's no inflation.
We're seeing that in everything we're doing, so.
So, and I, I guess I should backtrack a little, I did list costs for task one, task two, those were the costs that were listed on that initial email, obviously with the structural study, with the dives, those numbers are going to be, just, there's no way around it.
Right.
But we're tied to the dives anyway.
Yeah, no, I agree, but I just wanna be clear so there's no confusion when the bill comes and you jump me because it's more than what was listed on that sheet.
We wouldn't do that, we wouldn't jump.
Yeah, you're very good at this, but I just, I just want, want you to know what's going on, that's all.
Well, there's a point from, uh, well, the previous discussion and even a further back conservation board meeting, where this, uh, was being discussed and the extra, what you're, you know, what's in front of it, the money that was set aside to do studies in general, the comment was made, there was money left there to do more studies and obviously you said the board a while back that, well, if we're going with removing part of this and going with option whichever at the time, we're not gonna do anymore, but there's still money that was set aside to cover further studies like this.
Yep, you guys were generous.
Yeah, that's what I mean, the, the decision was that.
I think the reluctance from the conservation board was questioning whether or not spending money on additional studies.
Was wise, yeah, but if you're gonna go with one, the other two.
But that doesn't necessarily mean that you have to spend.
No, you don't have it, but, and that, I remember the, this was at, a lot of this was at a board meeting, but.
That was kinda where they were coming from, but after talking through it, um, we're ready to go ahead.
So, I mean, I just, fact that there was money there and yes, they're politically fiscally conservative, that board is, so they said, well, we're spending it for it, but now other things have transpired and information has come forth that, yeah, some more money will be spent on some further studies.
Well, in order to do what Brett and that group is interested in doing, we still have to find out if the thing is structurally sound enough to hang.
To even look at it.
Retainer gate, and if we don't know that, we're kinda facing our tail, so.
Um, yes, probably, one of the highlights or lowlights, as far as those notes go, I know Bruce and Sandy, I touched on this at the meeting, but, um, if you, if the dam is structurally sound and we are able to hang gates on it, based on the conversations with Brennan, those gates will not remove the silt that we're looking to remove. You're going to have to do some sort of mechanic removal. And I know we all hope, we all dreams that, hey, hang those gates and it just, nah, disappears. Uh, the engineer that, BJ Sil- Silgenberg said he didn't think so, he talked with, uh, hydrologists on staff at Mar and they all said, don't even waste your time looking at whether or not that would flush all that. So that was disappointing, I guess, but at least they were honest with us as far as hopefully we need to do.
And Brett still made the offer that he was willing to buy a dredger, um, for that use, so, and donate that, so I thought that was really, you know, that's very beneficial, we just have to find somebody to run it.
So I'm saying you can hang gates, but you're, you're probably gonna have to look at it as a bigger picture. In order to get what you want, you're gonna have to dredge probably, in conjunction with the gates. It's not gonna be just the gates.
Right.
Cause that would be, I don't know what you would gain by just hanging the gates, so.
And I guess the other side of it is, is we're still gonna have to come back around full circle and figure out what we're gonna do or ni- I don't believe it's ever gonna be water skiing and stuff like that behind the dam like it was back in the seventies. I mean, that, to me.
It's reality, it's gonna be more of a small fishing boat and kayaking.
Yeah, small fishing boat, canoeing, kayak, I don't know, I'm, I'm just being realistic, but I still believe that the amount of people that fish around there and I just don't wanna, I guess, we only exhaust all of our options to see what we, where we are and then we'll let the public decide, this is what we're gonna do and we'll go from there.
We still need to find out what the DNR will allow, correct?
Uh, the DNR will allow you to do just about, I mean, I didn't say anything, but they will work with you. They wanna see some modifications made, whatever those modifications might be. Obviously they have a preference for improving productivity with muscle and fish.
Yeah, they're more in favor of the dam removals.
Reproaches are a soft stop for that and that's why there would be outside funding for that part of the project. Um, but in, in talking to Nate Hooveen, which is kind of a, a damn.
A damn guy.
Yeah, I guess, if you went all in that with the DNR, he's willing to work with us on anything.
Okay, good.
He said even dredging or whatever he is going to.
Well, that's a good, I didn't realize that, I thought we still had to find out.
When we talk about dredging, let me say mechanical, could we use like a, a long reach?
Yes, that's why, I mean, dredging in the notes, when you think of a barge, a typical, on the water type thing, it doesn't necessarily have to be that.
They dredged the Mississippi with a long reach, they set it down in a barge and they scoop it out and dump it on. My question is, um, I sit on the landfill board down in Fort Dodge and they're buying sand. I wonder if we should contact them and see if this sand mix would be usable for them? Cause even if they would pay for the trucking to get it away, we could give it to them.
Don't put that in the paper.
No, don't put that in the paper. That's just, yeah, we're just tapping my head here. Again, when you say we buy sand, we buy a lot of sand, cause we've got a land, lined the whole landfill with sand. It's like, I can't remember, it's a hundred and twenty million tons or something like that we predicted, it's a lot.
Option we end up going, I guess that might be a good fit because of the questions we talked about is.
Where, where you go with it?
Where you go with it, and if we have somebody who could use it, so maybe I'll get in contact with them and see if, see if they're interested, then it's over the next few years if they're gonna be opening up some new cells and that's when you need it.
Awesome.
That'd be great.
So, cause I think they gotta put like a foot and a half of sand.
But leach is, if it leaches, it leaches through that sand?
Yeah, it's to protect the rubber liner.
From le- okay, from leaching, okay, gotcha.
From poking holes.
Okay, I thought it was like for.
Yeah, they're lining it.
Oh, holy crap.
Wow.
Obviously new area going out there.
No wonder nothing does any day.
Liners.
Yeah.
There was one liner, when I was on the board several years ago, it was right at two.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's a tremendous amount.
Just, just as all this is on paper.
Yeah, I just got to think about that today, it's like, I gotta go to a meeting tonight and I'll visit a friend tonight.
Shell, just start adding the site.
Good, we can, we do have.
So, uh, you like the top side or you have the back?
They take it away.
With the utility?
The top ones would be, yes.
That's what it'll be, down below?
Well, you'll rig up, that's the biggest problem, dredging for that's where you put it around. You'll be able to stuff your deck down, that's awesome.
If I take home the calls up camping, they always ask if we have pull-throughs.
Really?
These campers are getting longer and longer and longer.
I suppose, yeah.
No, and I wouldn't wanna drag, or pull some, so I don't blame them.
Yeah.
But it's, it's on the, on the list, on the shortlist, and I hope they're, shows up.
Are our campgrounds pretty much staying?
Busy, we have, you know, weather this spring was so crazy, we had kind of a slow start last few weekends, I've been busy. I don't know if we're, I mean, the top last year, last year was kinda.
I'm sure the prices feel, when you play these campers, you get about five miles a gallon.
You took the words out of my mouth, I think that's affected a few as far as the amount of recreation, amount of travel.
They might, people might stay closer to home.
But not dramatically, I think we'll end up money wise close to where we were last year, so I think things are going well. I haven't heard too many complaints, I guess, hopefully you have some either, so I must mean things are okay.
What are you thinking about, another house or two out of Sheldon?
Dave, the cabins that we have are rented on the weekends, but I haven't had to turn very many people away.
Oh, okay.
So, I think I would like to focus on getting that shelter there in the middle of that porshoe, which is one of the three that are booked, money.
Right.
See if things kinda pick up, and I think they will, uh, but I bet we're looking at twenty, twenty-five, twenty, twenty-six before there's a need for additional cabins, is kinda where I'm at.
Down below the old pit toilets, are you thinking about changing them out?
Yes, yep, as part of the early funding, there will be a modern restroom facility in conjunction with the new camp sites down here. So that'll be a huge, huge improvement down there, that's the biggest complaint that I get and I think I told you, no matter how often you clean it, no matter how much smelly stuff you put in there, it's just not a very attractive place to go.
No.
Different, different topic.
Well, on the bright spot of camping, they're, they're working on the improvements at Lots Creek Park and.
Yep, uh, finishing up, do you know the air works Saturday?
Um.
Did you go by, and maybe you didn't?
Uh, it's hard to say, I didn't drive in there, but I talked to the guys on Friday.
Yep.
I see you intentionally told me to go up there and then lap, but that's fine. I know it, but it looked like that's gonna be very nice, you talk about a couple of pull-throughs and how they designed that and, and to increase the size of the spots, which was a complaint that I would hear. Well, we would go there, it's a nice area, but it's not big enough. Now it's gonna be big enough and the service is gonna be better.
Upgraded the electrical service?
Yeah, big time, they were digging and getting rid of a couple of trees and, I mean, it's, yeah, so good use of that and it's gonna make it a, a really nice facility.
That will be attractive.
It will be, so that people will have, you know, and just kinda lay out the, the actual set, structured sites, pull-throughs of the vacuums are gonna be very nice and large and, uh, there's still a lot of green space, even when they get those done.
I think we've kinda hit a, a good balance.
Yeah, that's what they, when we looked at it, nice.
We have a distance between you and your neighbor, you have privacy, so I think it would.
Well, it's gonna, I think that will be utilized, so that's, that's a positive.
And that, yeah, try to make it, cause like Dave said, the campers are not getting any smaller.
No.
No, they're not.
It is user friendly, it's not gonna.
I think it's really, it's gonna be a nice addition.
How many sites are there there?
There's gonna be five, which.
So it'd be like a, maybe a nice family kinda type thing or reunion type?
Yeah, older, I don't know, maybe older couples that like to just go somewhere and just.
Quiet.
Practicing.
More of a quiet.
Scotch, pretty dizzy, pretty boisterous at times.
Lot of, lot of little kids up there and.
So, a little bit more private and quieter, so.
That's great.
It's good to have that option.
Yep.
Alright.
Okay, we still got you here unless you're in a hurry.
No, I'm not.
Okay, um, on the, with the Iowa Heritage Foundation, this land up by the, what, the Renwick?
Yep.
Well, it's not so much that, there's land south of Renwick that they own also. Is that right?
Yep, I believe so.
And I was just driving by that the other day and I see there's a lot of eight-foot cottonwoods out in that grassy area already. I know that's a long-term plan, they're gonna hold it for quite a few years. By the time it does become available for the county, it's gonna be a forest.
Okay, I'm gonna have to combine that piece.
Yeah, I didn't know if that's their plan to turn it into a forest.
I thought it was supposed to be prairie.
Yeah, that's what I kinda thought too, and if you look at it, it's gonna, in, in ten years, it's gonna be a forest.
I'll reach out to them.
Just, just tell them, take a look at it.
Don't they have to do some type of spraying or wouldn't you think?
What they do occasionally is they'll burn them off to kill the trees that are coming.
I see.
But after they get too big.
After they get, yeah, and they're, they're, they're getting big, so I just, I maybe.
A lot of them?
Oh, an eighty acres, I bet you there's a couple thousand.
Oh, holy nothing.
There's a lot of them.
They better figure something out.
Yeah, see what the thought, see what their plans are, I guess.
I think they do a pretty good job of managing what they have, but I don't think they had that piece very well.
No, they haven't, and the cottonwoods are really coming.
Spaced it off or.
Cottonwoods are the best trees to have anyways.
Yeah, I just thought maybe we should reach out to them and see what's going on there and.
Yep.
And so, oh, then I mentioned, I think they would mention something about the old landfill out here.
Okay, yeah, and I know we talked about that at the meeting too, good point.
Well, when I was out there with, uh, more engineering this last time doing a little walkthrough, uh, we've talked about fencing off the actual landfill part, cause there's forty-five acres out there that gets farmed and then there's another five acres that they mowed for hay that isn't actually landfill.
Never was.
Never was, there's no garbage on it, there's no nothing on it. And then there's the borrow pit, which is, I don't know how big of, you know, it might be an acre, maybe three acres, two, three acre pond, that could be used for whatever, and right now it's not being used for anything. I just thought it might be a nice recreational area. I know the, the trap shooting, uh, organization had talked about looking at that at one time and, and, um.
Yeah, we did talk about that at the meeting too, I apologize, but.
But the thing I worry about trap shooting, when you got that pond there, if you get, when you're so close to water, you gotta use steel shot.
Yeah, yeah.
So that may not work for trap shooting.
But, but the, the conservation board would be interested in working something out?
Yeah.
Um, taking the root management of that piece if that's something that you guys wanted to pursue.
Yeah, but you know.
So we're gonna work out the details, I guess, between us.
I think they just need to visit, visit about maybe the future of that site. Uh, I know I spoke with Ben about helping us on the survey of where we'd have to put the fence and things like that. And like Dave said, their office could sign off on it when we did the survey and figure out where the fence goes.
Because they still have wood out there or?
The city still holds trees out there and burns out there, which that would probably have to come to an end.
Yes.
Have to be something different probably, yeah.
But, um, you know, I think it would be a nice place for people to go out and pan fish, you know, or whatever and, um.
So, yeah, whenever you're ready to talk a little bit more into it, I'll be doing that.
Okay.
Luke's going to another meeting just for you.
Yeah, hey.
Like the conservation board meeting.
Yeah, you're gonna give me stuff, I'll show up any time.
But it's, it looks like a nice place, that's something we can, we can do.
I agree, because that's something, in all the areas we have, we don't have that little area of fecal fishing, take your kid fishing, catch a lube, or catch a.
First time fishing, yeah.
We've always talked about doing some programming and having like a kids' fish day. The river's just not very conducive to that.
No, there's too many snags and stuff like that, you can't just throw a bobber out there and watch it float around.
Things going, I think it'd be a perfect area to do something like that, so it's exciting, so I just say, I'm not gonna.
And we've had the water tested several times and it's been come back safe every time we've tested it, so.
Okay, so, yeah, sounds like.
I always found it a lot.
Yeah, when, in a wet year, it runs over, runs out into the guy's, guy's field and, and I just put in a overflow, uh, tile and this last summer to prevent that from happening, cause it, you know, it used to fill up and then it, you know, take a long time, cause it had no outlet, for it to evaporate and shrink back into its boundaries.
When will we know for sure where they're gonna let that?
I think we can proceed with it anytime, the part of fencing off the old landfill, because that's the only part that, uh, I think we've already had conversations with the DNR on that and I think they're fine with that.
Okay, so that's good, so Ben needs to get busy, is what you're saying?
Well, I, I think it's.
We'll need to sit down and look at, uh, see where, and figure out where you're wanting fence. So figure out how much of that fifty acres you want for that.
Right.
So you get to fence off with these cells for the landfill itself, but not adjacent property.
Stay about a hundred, a hundred feet from the toe of the landfill. And then include the, the leach aid pond has to be fenced off, cause that's, that's the, the biggest problem is, if you had a bunch of people out there pretty soon, they'd be fishing in the leach aid pond, cause they think, oh, they could be fishing there. Well, it's, that's the place that's contaminated.
Gotcha, okay.
Even though there is bullfrogs and stuff and turtles in it, but, and the deer come up and drink out of it and they're not laying dead anywhere, but, you know, it's still, it tests, there is stuff in it.
No, that sounds good, Rick, I appreciate you reaching out to them.
Yeah.
Alright, can you speak to the tentative bike ride, is that something by Athletic Boosters that says here?
Uh, the Athletic Boosters, uh, have assumed responsibility for the big side hawk celebration on Main Street. Happens during the week of the Iowa, Iowa State football game. Uh, they're looking for a way to raise a little seed money to pay for the games, usually they'll have like a band or activities for kids. Um, Heart Pack Thirty, Jake's fly bomber has kinda stepped away from that, I, no one else has picked that up. So in lieu of that, tiny higher touch base of me wondering if the boosters could put on a bike ride as a sort of a fundraiser for, for them, uh, just a pretty good bit, uh, just a little different route would start north of Hy-Vee and go to Thor, I think she has talked to Uncies, Uncies will have refreshments there for people and then they turn around and ride back to town. Um, the date has changed because there was a conflict with Nag Ride, I believe, so it's going to be, don't quote me, but I think the last weekend of August now, instead of July. So it's been pushed back a little bit, but I just talked to her at baseball game on Thursday night and she's done. Hopefully it'll happen, it's just the date has changed from what was listed in the minutes.
Where, uh, will they post information on that when they get it more?
She wanted to do the Bike Booster Facebook page, I assume she'll do some advertising like in their vineyard named The Pregnant.
Good.
Uh, probably the radio, I would guess, but tiny hires kinda in charge of it, so.
Yeah, I think, well, I, I wish them well on that, I, I think it would be, and it may be better pushed back to the end of August too, actually.
Yeah, no, I think it would be well received and the Heart Pack was always really popular.
Cause you got a kind of a core group of people that were always enthused about that, but unfortunately they didn't have enough people that keep going, oh, they said that last year.
Didn't that go the other way in the direction?
Yeah, I admit it's always started, I guess the first year it did go to Thor back, but the other nine years it went from Rutland to Roll and then back to Rutland.
Well, that's good, I think that, I hope, I wish them well on that and I hope they have good attendance and they wanna get, raise a little money for their other endeavors.
A good way to showcase the trip.
Yeah, it is. Awesome.
Alright, well, thank you much for your time, Todd.
Thank you, Todd.
Lot of information there.
Yeah, good information. Yeah, good information.
Okay. Uh, it looks like we're down to our committee reports.
Okay, Tuesday night, the fourteenth, I went to the conservation meeting, we talked about the dam. And, that's it.
That's it?
That's my, this is my crazy week, so next week, watch out.
Fourteenth, they had a board of adjustment meeting here. Uh, let me just savor through these. Uh, fifteenth, we had a Humboldt County housing meeting, talked about different things. We viewed the Sunland home that was ready. It's a nice starter home, in my opinion, on it. It, uh, it would be for an older couple or starting out, somebody young. There's one on Second Street South and. Seven, seven, oh, seven, oh, what is, seven something? South side, they're still there. Being seventh and eighth.
Oh, okay.
The doors aren't on the garages yet, they're on order, but, uh, the other house, uh, we toured, was on Eighth, and, uh, it's a pretty nice little house. Small deck on it, off of the, uh, living kitchen area, and three bedrooms up, two baths, and then the basement is, uh, not finished, it's full basement, and, uh. Do they have any grass window in the basement?
Are they, um, new, or are they?
They're new.
Okay, that's right, okay. So, it wasn't one of the models.
Hundred and ninety-nine-nine, wasn't it? I think that's what we talked about, that the price, supposed to have been a hundred and seventy-nine, now it's a hundred and ninety-nine-nine.
That's a good starter home price.
It's a good starter home for somebody, real nice.
How many bedrooms?
Three bedroom, two bath.
Perfect.
I'm not sure. Right at a thousand. Sort of, a thousand, twelve hundred, the most. Yeah. They're, yeah, they're, they're, you know, they're not real big, but they're. The master bedroom, and then there's a closet, and then you walk through that into the bathroom, and it's a nice full bathroom. And, uh, then there's a, like, an entryway living, and then the kitchen, that's all in one room.
So, it's open concept?
It's open, and then there's, uh, a deck off of the kitchen, and then there's a small bedroom right at the end of that, uh, open area, and there's another small bedroom next to that, and a bathroom right off the end, and then the steps go down, the utilities are down there. Um, your appliances are all furnished, washer, dryer, stove, refrigerator, it's all furnished, microwave.
That's a really good deal then.
It's a nice house. It's, uh, should be energy efficient. Yeah, they're, they're built with those, um, styrofoam panel construction from Breitinger, where they're, uh.
Like the, what do you call that, R H factor, or something like that?
Uh, it's Energy Panel Systems, E P S, I think it's, I think it is, or an Energy Build System, I don't know the two. And they're, uh, basically O S B, sections of styrofoam and O S B, and then they, the wall, or one chunk, the whole exterior wall coming in one piece, and they set up all the exterior walls in four, four pieces, and put a roof on it.
So, it's more energy efficient to do it that way?
Yeah, well, this company, uh, comes to Humboldt, geez, two and a half years ago.
Two and a half, three years.
With this idea to build these low-cost homes for one sixty-nine. It was their original proposal.
When they were brown at one seventy-nine.
Before we even built down, they had it bumped to one seventy-nine due to the COVID problems. And then they had labor issues, which pushed them back, and then fully got pushed back, the inflation raised the cost. So, it was, it was the perfect storm for this company to fail.
Yeah, that's too bad.
It is, because they, you know, they, I think it was a good idea, but it, it had a lot of things against it. And their hopes are to put these up in a lot of the smaller communities, trying to get affordable housing in these communities.
And you, you could put a bedroom in the basement.
Yeah, you very easily could put. You could throw a.
There's probably three-foot bowl down.
Yeah. They, they, they do have a nice basement in them, and, and, uh, so. Okay, then on seventeenth, I had a board of health meeting. And, uh, right now, the COVID's kinda at a standstill. Um, Michelle was saying that some of the hospitals are closing rooms or beds. Uh, so far, I don't believe Humboldt has, but it's not due to COVID or anything like that, it's due to shortage of nurses. They can't get help to maintain the bed. She said something like Mercy in Des Moines, I believe it was, don't quote me on it, but, uh, I believe she said they shut down one whole floor, because they can't get help. And, uh, it was the Methodist down there, closed thirty sunbeds.
Yeah.
And they can't get help, nobody can get help, the nurses, uh, the nurses aides, C N As, all that, they can't get help. So, it was interesting, and they gave us a report wherever it went, it was going around here.
I got it, I'm still.
He gave us another report, and it looks very good.
Wow, very good.
I think there was a question come up in one of my meetings, whether there was money for a septic tank closure. And he said, there's still money for wells and septic tanks, that's on a grant, so. Because, uh, what, septic tank or a well, or system that needs closed, there's money out there to close them. That's all I had.
Pretty busy waiting for you, Dave. Okay, on, uh, Tuesday the fourteenth, we had a Public Safety Commission meeting that morning. I have to officially.
Uh, I also did L E C, or Public Safety, I guess it's called actually, Public Safety meeting on Monday morning, and that's all I had this week.
Alright, I had Wednesday, or excuse me, Tuesday, Conservation Board, attended with Sandy. Um, Thursday, I got a phone call from Dean. Um, we're having quite a few complaints up north of town still.
They're hauling them out.
They're hauling, oh, not the windmills, I'm talking further north.
Oh, okay.
They are hauling them out, and I, I damn near rolled my pickup the other day when I come by. I met a lot of them, and so I turned around and went back to double check, and there was another truck up in there loading, so about that time, I got a phone call from Sands, and he said, they are taking them down to this place and that recycling center, and they're trying to get them out as fast as they can, but, like you said earlier, there's a shortage of the trucks that are moving them. So, hopefully, he said they will be done in a month or two, and then we get rid of our cat problem up there that we have.
They're gonna take them with them? Hope so, between the coons and the cats, and we hope they take all of them.
But.
Relocate.
Dean called on further up Highway one sixty-nine there, and, uh, there's stuff out in the ditch again. And there's complaints, and he had a phone call into the D O T, because the D O T said the next time they're putting stuff into the ditch, they would come down, so he, I, he had me call John, and I left a message for John to see where we're at with our part of it, and John was supposed to give me a call back, so, anyway, that's where we're at. I guess that's all I had. Uh, anything else for?
Anything?
Ben, do you got anything?
I was just gonna read you guys another data update from last week.
Perfect.
Uh, we did get that shortage torn out on two hundred and tenth street between Birch and Colorado, and got the hand search pipe set. It is backfilled and opened back up to traffic. We got a little bit more dirt work to do on the four corners, and then spread some grassy, but that job otherwise is done.
That was us, our labor, right?
That was our labor, yeah, that was, uh, uh, three guys for basically two days, that set that one.
Good.
That's pretty efficient.
We had, uh.
You didn't send us the video of it rolling in the?
This one didn't roll, this one was cut and have dry bottom on it. Uh, this one, they were able to drag into place. They had it set there on the north side, basically waiting for the opening, and once, uh, once they had the bridge decked top off, they were able to dig the grave and place rock, and then drag this thing into place.
So, we have riprock on the bottom side of that, or how?
For the corners, we don't, uh, I've never seen water go through this one. Um, but I know there's grassland on both sides.
Alright.
So, I'm sure there is some water that goes.
When you get heavy rains, it probably goes through there.
Yeah, so I'm hoping we get grass established. Uh, if it becomes an issue, yeah, we'll put riprock in the four corners. Uh, a ton of my guys completed motor driver training last week. Uh, Monday was in the classroom, Tuesday was out on one ninetyth or Florida, whichever you call it, uh, West Rutland. Um, Wednesday morning, they were back in the classroom because of all the rain, and then Wednesday afternoon, and a long day on Thursday, completed the, the training. I would, uh, tell you guys to go by and take a look at what they did out there. Um, they cut the tops, and they cut the, the four slopes, and pulled that material into the road, and reclaimed a lot of that rock. Uh, dragged the sod, and they'll be dragging the sod back and forth for probably another week or so, uh, to break that up, and the wind will take care of it the rest of the way. Uh, I'd like to bring him back in October for his second training session that he has, where they run in the ditch bottom and clean ditch with the motorators, pile, and basically build up and pile up the road, and I'd like to do the same thing on that same stretch of road.
Oh, okay.
Uh, I've got it on my five-year plan, it's not in this fiscal year, but if we can do it.
As a training exercise, yeah.
As a training exercise with our own guys and our own forces, it'll save, uh, seventy-five thousand, whatever it is I had planned in the five-year plan.
Yeah, so, did use the funds.
Uh, the large format scanner got delivered, uh, and set up on Wednesday. Um, I have an employee that should be coming back today for light duty, that's gonna start scanning, um, employees for least, uh, full capacity.
So, will there be a training from them?
Uh, they showed, they showed me how to do it, so, when I get back to the office, I think he said he planned on being there about ten. Get a doctor to come in this morning.
Good.
I'll show them how to do it, and we'll get started.
Okay.
Perfect.
Uh, that meeting room is finished and complete, and available for anybody that needs to use it. It'll easily house thirty people, probably. Um, we're gonna start staking for Chevron installation up on A J Burdys Road. Uh, through those curves there, there's been, uh, a recent series of accidents from people that are traveling south that aren't familiar with the area, that are missing the curb.
Ooh.
And sort of install parts of Chevron, that, that helps steer traffic.
Thanks for doing that, cut the stuff, Ben.
Um, starting thing got delivered, but I don't have time for it yet. Uh, safety letters or emails got sent out to all department heads. Uh, I've gotten a couple of emails back. Go look at moving forward with that, trying to find this money.
That was a lot of reading.
Yeah, it was very good, very thorough.
I, I appreciate, I started reading through that, and wow, somebody spent a lot of time putting it together.
Did a lot of the forms, uh, we just had to edit it and leave them for us.
Well, I appreciate it very much. If you haven't looked through it, it's very in-depth. And I guess I'd like to visit sometime about how you, if you want somebody from this board, if you want someone just permanent, or if you wanna roll a person, however you wanna do that, but I think we should have some voice in listening or partaking in it.
I agree.
See, probably, uh, what they recommended was five to seven people, and they serve basically a two-year term, and then move on. Uh, that way, nobody feels like they're stuck in a position, um, that they think. You should probably have, I don't know, someone from the secondary roads besides me. Uh, you should have someone from the auditor's office who sees, uh, the working income claims come in. Uh, someone from law enforcement, because they're our heaviest hitter when they do have a working income claim. Uh, someone from the board, and at least two representatives from the courthouse, maybe one from conservation, if they know.
It sounds like a good, good group of people.
Wanted, I, I guess, didn't mean to be on camera, but, uh, the week of the fourth of July, uh, we're on four tens, our guys have been on four tens for a couple of years now, talking to other counties, with how they've handled the holiday week. They just keep them on four tens, and give them a ten-hour day for the holiday versus the standard eight. Uh, the biggest complaint for my guys is just when they get in the habit of doing four tens as holiday hits, and screws them up going back to eights, and then they jump back to ten to eight, and so I, I would like to give my guys the ten-hour holiday as opposed to the eight I would have been doing.
And then keep them on the regular four?
And then they stay on four tens.
So, the other, they get?
All day till Labor Day.
Uh, fourth of July is on Monday, is it not?
Yeah.
My guys would get an extra two-hour vacation.
Um, for that, for that holiday?
Yeah, for that.
And, and then they would work four ten-hour days, balance of that week?
Right, so.
So that it would just.
In this instance, they'd get ten hours for Monday for holiday, and then they'd work Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
Yeah, they'd only be three days.
They would, yeah, three days, three days.
Instead of going back to eights, where they'd get the eight hour on Monday, and then eight hours Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, is what they'd be.
I'm following you now.
I don't have no problem with it. Everybody else, thanks, too. I can bring that up next week if you want, for agenda.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's think about it.
We'll think of.
Keep thinking of it. Yeah, that's, that's it, uh.
Have you started mowing much?
We have started, uh, mowing the mower should run in. Uh, we got one set in the case in the hills since right now, at Humboldt Shop.
Tell me it's not the tank.
Uh, maybe it's not the tank, it's, uh, I believe it's a thermostat, so it should be a relatively simple fix. Um, Conservation used our tractor backhoe from the boat shop last week and did sustained damage to it. Uh, push-in of trees from the Little More Park, um, John Deers gonna take a look at it. I think they took a tree trunk to the front grill, and, uh, pushed in the A C condenser unit, that's what we did, so. Just giving a heads up. They'll give us an estimate of how much it's gonna cost, and they'll decide on whether or not to file a claim or just get one.
Alright.
That's it.
Thank you for stopping here.
Thanks, Ben.
Do you need anything else?
Just a quick update, weed control wise, uh, been a few weeks ago that all the hard surface roads have been treated in the county. Um, the balance of the plan program will be the solid.
Um, the balance of the plan program will be the south half of the county. It's basically a late summer thistle application, but in the meantime, and your complaint was, or concern, we got that squared away. So that's, there've been a couple of those, and I talked to Sandy and she talked to me, but so also kind of a plan pro, it, it isn't a plan program, but if there's any things that need to be addressed outside of our, the plan program, the next, uh, let's see, where are we at, million, uh, month would be prime time if there's a location, be it thistles or giant ragweeds.
Or turnip?
Or the parsnip.
Whatever, parsnip?
Parsnips, well, kind of getting past the treatable stage. That's why we went to this early application, you know, where it's, it's really effective, where it's already been done. Uh, but anything, but particularly thistles in the next short month, giant ragweeds in the next month. If there is an outbreak that it is, you know, please call it to my attention because that's plan that, okay, there's this section, we can get out and get it taken care of and it's very effective. But past the end of July, that becomes less effective because in the case of giant ragweeds, they start seeding, going to seed, hardening off, treating them then is kind of a waste of money. But the next month for sure on things like giant ragweed, stinging metal, things that are just obnoxious, uh, is a really good ti, and we try to kind of accumulate these spots and then we'll say ladder into July, then they can make one swing around and catch all of those known problem areas and get them taken care of, so it's, uh, so I just note to public...
Why can't we come up with the grass that will grow like the weeds grow?
Once, once broomgrass gets established, it does a pretty good job of choking out. But the things I talk about, that, you know, thistles, giant ragweeds, weeds in general, it's like Ben gave an update where they put in a structure, the dirt's disturbed, it's bare.
Farmer oversprays a little round up on the back slope and killed the grass.
Long-established grass and, uh, weeds just love that because they will...
More, more that are, or whatever digging.
Yeah, they just will take off in that and so that's where the spots where if you can get the weeds beat down, the grass will come. That's what's mostly in the ditches is broomgrass and it, there's a great weed control, but you gotta get it established. So just, realistically, just think the next month for any outbreaks and stuff is very effective and it'll get taken care of.
Yeah. One other thing, I did meet with Don Reefer last week.
Yeah.
He came out to the landfill out there and sprayed brush. So I went out there and pointed out what brush needed to be sprayed out there because we had a guy come in and dig out a whole bunch of willows. Well, you know, willows, they just keep coming back, so I sprained out, so...
Got rid of them, yep, he said that he got some there and hit that.
We spray pumpkins and, uh, where the males or gophers would dig up on our, in our...
Dig what?
On our old acreage.
Yeah.
Man, those were the best pumpkins.
I was just gonna say, you know, can you do it?
Oh, yeah, they, they grow really good there.
Had that nice mound of dirt and they threw them in there.
Oh, yeah.
I just asked Trish if the Fourth of July was the claims week. If it is, we can do it electronically, if it isn't, we can, it'll be the following week because I'm assuming we won't meet on the Fourth. The week of the Fourth, the courthouse is closed.
Yeah.
But if we have to do claims, if that happened to fall in that week, we could...
Well, claims will be next week, right? So it should be okay.
Yes, it should be next week.
We should be good then.
I'm just thinking ahead and I've heard sometimes to do...
Perfect. No, I just wanted to bring that up that...
I'll make a motion to adjourn?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Both saying so, motion carried.